Good evening, everyone. Welcome you and your shining faces today. I call the City Council Committee, the whole meeting, to order for July 7th, 2021. At this time, we're having a moment of silence for whatever you're concerned about. A lot of things going on, so I ask you to think about whatever you're concerned about. Thank you. Alderman Condon, if you'd please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Brian Krupp, our city clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Dunn.
Here.
Doorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobjen.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. So again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the whole. Again, like to welcome everybody in attendance here and anybody who's viewing the meeting through any particular mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and everybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for everyone. At this time, if you have a cellphone or an electronic device here, if you please put it on silent or shut it off just simply so it doesn't interfere with anybody talking. If you want to address the council on any specific item on the agenda or any other time public business at the end, please come to the podium, the microphone's above you. Please address the council as a whole and not to any one individual. Let us know your name. We'd ask you to let us know your name and where you're from, your address or ward, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please limit your remarks to five minutes, and we'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator, Ms. Cory Spiegel, is there any update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. We have three public hearings this evening. They're under Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Doorman will lead those. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the first public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2021 crack-in-the-seat program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. Open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Archer Court resurfacing Waverly Court to cul-de-sac project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and I open the third and final public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Eastern Avenue resurfacing 43rd to 46th Street project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and that concludes the public hearing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. The next item is, we have one proclamation this evening, so I'll read. City of Davenport proclamation, whereas Homebase Iowa connects Iowa businesses with qualified veterans and their spouses looking for career opportunities and provides resources to help connect veterans and their families with education and in transitioning to a new community. And whereas Homebase Iowa also provides additional resources and discounts for veterans who relocate to these communities, and whereas the Homebase Iowa initiative consists of two programs, Homebase Iowa Business and Homebase Iowa Communities. And whereas Homebase Iowa Communities offer valuable incentives for veterans who relocate to their community, and whereas the City of Davenport will contribute $25,000 to begin the Homebase Iowa program, which the Quad City Chamber will then administer, whereas the City of Davenport will offer an incentive of $1,500 towards the purchase of a home in Davenport. And now, therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport do hereby proclaim July 2021 as Homebase Iowa Month and look forward to working with Homebase Iowa partners to provide veterans and their families a safe, stable, and welcoming community. I look forward to a motion to approve the proclamation. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And David Antonelli, I'll meet you at the podium.
Congratulations. This is cool. Say a few words.
Okay. Thank you, Davenport, for this opportunity. John Deere, as a business, this is a critical aspect of attracting talent to our workforce. We came to the city a couple of months ago and really appreciate your willingness to help us get this started in Scott County. The Chamber also played a key role, and we also would like to thank Scott County officials in bringing this, and it can make a significant difference in helping attract veterans with key talents to our businesses and also to our community. So thank you very much, John Deere. On behalf of John Deere, we thank you for your help, Mayor, in getting this started. Congratulations.
Thank you, David, for your leadership in making sure we did what we need to do. Thank you. So, next is petitions and communications. So I'll get to my colleagues, but you didn't see earlier, wonderful thing happened today. Thousand jobs came to Davenport. Amazon relocating a major facility here. So happy and proud of that. The work and the partnership and the collaboration and the teamwork between the City of Davenport, our staff, Chamber folks, other folks, the GDRC, working together because they had a choice where to go, and they picked here. So that's a big deal, and I applaud everybody. So Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First of all, I'm very excited to say I'm holding my first in-person ward meeting on Thursday, which is tomorrow, at 6:00. It's going to be at the Eastern Library, but we're also going to be able to do it with go-to meeting virtually. So I'm really hoping to have a lot of folks. CFO Mallory Merritt will be speaking about the money coming in from the American Rescue Plan Act, as well as answering any questions that folks may have about our budget and the direction we're going. So it'll be a good one, and I hope people come. I also was out riding my bike today on the riverfront multi-use trail, and it's wonderful to see the fencing going up in Heritage Park. It's looking very nice. And also checked out the Causeway at Credit Island, and lots of improvements, not completely, but lots of improvements out there. So, anyway, it was very good, and missed the rain, and also had a chance to help somebody that was stranded out on Credit Island with a flat tire. So that's why I, the other real reason I couldn't make it to the meeting this afternoon. So, anyway, thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two things tonight. First, I wanted to remember a very important person for the central community circle who passed away last week. A lot of people probably didn't know Lupe Serrano, but she was a long-term resident at Sixth and Vine. She and her husband were among the first Hispanic families to move to that part of the city, and she was welcomed by her neighbors, as she well should have been, because she turned out to be a terrific one. She was very instrumental in, I met Lupe at community policing meetings, and she and Brad Krebison, who's the president of CCC, were very focused on the traffic circle, which they were pushing for because there was such terrible traffic at Vine and Sixth, and she worked hard, they worked hard, all the time on that. We were finally able, a few years ago, to actually put that in place, and we were able to plant a tree a few weeks ago. She was ill with cancer, she wasn't able to join us, but it was right across from her house, so we were thinking of her. She was a wonderful person, she worked in the food pantry there, the neighborhood, a fierce proponent for her neighborhood. My thoughts are with her family, who live in that area as well, but she was a great contributor, so I just wanted to remember Lupe tonight as the kind of people that really make our neighborhoods great. The other thing, on a more upbeat note, I guess, is that we do have our first party in the park tomorrow night, and it is in Third Ward. It's at Lafayette Park, which is at Gaines and Fourth Street. We will have all kinds of booths, we will have people from all over the city there, we'll have games for the kids, there'll be food, we'll have neighborhood associations, we'll have neighborhood groups. So if you would like to join us, this kicks off our party in the park season. There'll be seven events this year, and again, it starts at 5:30, so please join us if you can, and that's all I have tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Doorman.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. I have a couple of items myself as well. First off, I'd like to thank all of Davenport and your commitment to celebrating the 4th of July in a safe and fashionable way, where our riverfront was full of people for red, white, and boom, and I'd love to thank that organization and specifically the members of the City of Davenport staff that helped contribute to put that on. It was a great event, and it was great to see so many people on our riverfront once again. Remember, though, that this year, we tried something new with having random special enforcement days that seemed to go well, where we really were trying to get out in there and tackle the people who were abusing fireworks, and with them being random, you never know when we are going to have our next one, and just because the firework season is over does not mean that we might not just be out in there with a special enforcement. So if you have fireworks that you didn't shoot off on July 4th, keep them in your garage until next year or on New Year's Eve, which would be your next legal time to shoot them off. You never know when we'll be out in there to get you. The second thing I would like to say is, seeing that we have so many members here of our cycling community that are here to tell us about their commitment they would like to see to safe north-south passages here within our community. Clay Merritt, could I put you on the spot here and have you use this opportunity to maybe just explain what some of our capital projects we have relating to biking and multimodal space are?
Sure. Clay Merritt, Public Works. So I'll talk a little bit about a couple of projects we have. The first is the North-South Connector that the City Council Mayor have been discussing recently that's proposed with ARPA funds. That would take, it's on the east side of the city, kind of follows the Canadian Pacific Rail. It would take, it would pick up right at Duck Creek, which is just north of the creek on the trail system, go north all the way, pretty much go underneath Kimberly Road, and then go north all the way to 46. At that point, it will pick up projects that we, the City Council Mayor, have already funded and that we, the staff has already gotten federal grants for. For instance, so next year, we will build out a portion of Goose Creek that connects you right there, probably from 46th to 53rd, there's a small 10-foot trail that's right there. That will be expanded, it will go underneath 53rd Street next year and go all the way on the east side of Brady up to 59th. At that point, it will pick up another project, we're currently in the process of designing, which will go from 59th all the way up to Veterans Memorial, and it would pick it up at the Veterans Memorial 10-foot trail. So those two projects are in the works right now, and then the one that we talked about just before was the one that the council and mayor are considering now.
Thanks, Clay.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say that I know that the bike path, specifically Duck Creek and the riverfront trail, are two of our number-one assets that we have as a community. I remember as a kid so many times using both those routes as a fun family activity to do, to get us out and get us active and moving, and it wasn't until we moved away that you really kind of realized how important those are to a community and what they mean to a community, and so I'm glad that we're able to live back here in Davenport and be able to have access to that. But taking that a step further is definitely something that I would like to see happen, and as you could hear from Clay, this current City Council has already shown a lot of commitment towards that and making that a reality here in the coming year or two. And so I appreciate all of you guys showing up for showing your support, and I wanted you to know that cycling is a huge part of my life, and I'm glad that the City Council has also supported it as well. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Doorman. Alderman Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to say that I have arranged for a Ward Seven meeting to take place on July 24th, that is a Saturday, July 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. I do not have a set agenda for this meeting, but I was thinking upstairs that I would subtitle the meeting Ward Seven Meeting, Meet the Man, Beat the Man. I'm your temporary Ward Seven Alderman, and someone will be in this seat starting in November, but in the meantime, I, you know, I am fully in service of you, and I will hope to continue in some capacity later. I don't claim to know all of the rules of accounting, but I do know the central tenet: for every credit, there must be a debit, and that applies in so many ways in our life. When you move, you know, you move toward a certain direction, and the things that you left behind have to be debited in some way for that credit that you picked up. Today, it was made abundantly clear to me that this, the situation here in Davenport and the Quad Cities, it's hot. I mean, it really is. I mean, we're doing a lot of things that we should be very excited about as a community. We are. And the experience that I had from this morning to this afternoon was that perhaps when we look forward to some of the triumphs that we celebrate, there is the opportunity for us to leave some of our fellow citizens in the lurch in some way. You know, perhaps, you know, you have a lot of successes in a particular place. It raises the, it raises the expectations, raises the rents, quite frankly, in other places. And I got to tell you, this was quite a day for me personally, to see, you know, our mayor, frankly, switch gears from the great triumphant announcement this morning to be able to deal with some of the things that are going on in terms of, you know, you know, well, properties that wish to improve, but the tenants that live there, and they get left behind, and I'm very proud now, today, to be a part of this City Council and this city for that reason. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Miller. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Alderwoman McGinnis, with your help, I just wanted to double down on the Party in the Park announcement and help you understand what that is. If you're not familiar, Alderwoman McGinnis helped initiate a series of parties in neighborhood parks throughout the summer, and so they're not your premier locations that we all think about, but they're the, sometimes forgotten about neighborhood parks. And what happens is all of the city staff and city services and many of your elected officials will be there. And after a year of pandemic and the clumsiness and the silos that we put ourselves in with social media and even this environment, which can be a clumsy way to try to communicate, Party in the Park is a great opportunity to know your aldermen and dive a little deeper into a nuanced conversation. So throughout the summer, keep an eye on it for those. Every Thursday?
Yeah, pretty much.
It's every other, pretty much every other, but there's three in July, there's two in August, and two in September. They're on the city's website, so they can go on the website and type in Party in the Park.
So again, taking advantage of our captive audience, we'd be thrilled to see you there.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, Alderman Miller, you have a meeting in the morning, you better have plenty of donuts.
Yes, I will.
All right. And Mayor Mattson and I have served together for a long time, and Mike's leadership dealing with the veterans and the military in our community is incredible. And, you know, the city of Davenport is America's greatest city, and oftentimes, the great things that happen in our community, our great staff, you don't, we don't shout from the hilltops how great Davenport is, you know, we're a Can Do City, and when it comes to the vets, Mike, I think we should start making a list of all the positive programs the veterans and the military can find within our great city and put them on the wall. You just checked another one off tonight, and, you know, I'm incredibly proud of Davenport, and, you know, Alderman Miller, you're part of the greatest city in America. So have those donuts, and you'll have a great crowd, and make sure they know they're going to be donuts. Thanks.
Alderwoman Dickman.
I'm going to third the enthusiasm for Party in the Park. We weren't obviously able to have those last year, but two years ago, they were really great events. I know public safety is forefront on all of our minds, and you might not necessarily connect going to a park and seeing your, you know, neighbors with public safety, but that's where you meet your neighbors, so you know if something seems off or, you know, all sorts of reasons. Having just presence of people around makes neighborhoods more enjoyable and safer. And also, I know my kids really enjoyed being able to get on the police, like, loudspeaker thing and call to me from across the park, so if you have any children who would also enjoy embarrassing you in that similar fashion, I highly recommend it.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to do something a little bit. Come on, thanks. Do something a little bit different here. Typically, I wouldn't make comment ahead of public comment, but the way this is set up is whomever is speaking on behalf of the cycling community and the multimodal community, you'll speak at the end of the meeting, and then we won't have an opportunity to respond to you. And I see a lot of friends and neighbors and familiar faces and great community people out in the crowd, and I just wanted to thank you for showing up and being supportive and supporting multimodal transportation in the city of Davenport. It's much appreciated. As a supporter, the one thing I'll say, we're very challenged in that we're a 190-year-old city, and building out multimodal transportation in an old city is not easy, it's not done in one fell swoop. Typically, it is one bike lane at a time, one sidewalk at a time, one stretch of shared use path at a time, and the best way, what we need as supporters of multimodal transportation is people to show up when that bike lane is on the agenda, when that shared use path is on the agenda, and when that sidewalk needs to be redone in your neighborhood. So thanks again for showing up, it's greatly appreciated, and I look forward to hearing your comments tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Anyone else? Okay, I have a couple alibis. So again, thank you for showing up. I agree. Got a lot of emails, conversations with folks. You're seeing this council listens to you. There's projects in the works, and there's going to be more projects. We understand your need, we agree with you. Two things I forgot, Monday night, Roosevelt Center, listening session. The good Ms. Spiegel and I will again be sitting there to listen to what you want to tell us that we don't know, so please come down if you want to talk with us. And then Friday, just so you're aware, State of the City, going to present many of the events that we did and many of the events that we're planning to do. I've used the term and I'll continue to use it, partnerships, teamwork, and collaboration. You saw it in effect today. We're going to continue to do that, and we're going to continue to do what you ask us to do and put the money to the things that the citizens are telling us to do, so you'll hear about that Friday. So with that, anyone else? Very good. Okay, so we'll move on now to our four areas of discussion: community development, public safety, public works, and finance. The first area is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss that. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case REZ 21-01, being the request of Dan Lorenson on behalf of Rock Church Ministries, Inc., to rezone Lot 2 of NIM's Acres from SOS Open Space District to R1 Single Family Residential District. Please note that Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial, so eight votes are required for passage. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
My name is Joshua Agwelo. I'm a second ward, and I just wanted to take this time to discuss or respond to some of the comments that the council discussed amongst themselves during our last committee of the whole meeting. The first is, I just want to mention, you know, a clear understanding of the process that we've been through. We started this project in 2017. We planned it as a fundraising kickoff, and it was the main thing that started that fundraising process. And as you're all aware, 2019, there was a new rezoning across the board across Davenport. And there was a comment made during the last committee of the whole that this is a very unique rezoning application, especially because when you consider the fact that during that 2019 rezoning redo, the space, open space, was created in 2019. It was not a pre-existing zoning type, so this is very, very unique. Also, when you talk about the notification process, you know, and up until last week, we were never given a clear answer that, in fact, there wasn't a mailer until the city attorney, who I don't, Tom, I believe, stated that. We brought this issue up throughout the process, and we were never given a clear answer until that week, which I don't know why, but that's the truth of the matter. Pastor Dan and I had the opportunity to sit down with Dr. Joseph Miller, so I was Ward Alderman, face to face, and in that meeting, he brought with him a vanilla folder that had maybe two or three pieces of paper in it, which, if that's any indication of the information that the City Council has been providing them as a whole, then we really, really, really need to look and dig in deeper at those items that have been provided you, because they have been. And that brings me to, I think, Mr. Jobjen, you mentioned your desire to know more about the interior quality of the space. Someone mentioned it, I don't know if it was you, Mr. Ambrose, or Alderman Jobjen, but within that, those exhibits, you'll find not only the renderings of the space, but also construction documents that are one step away from permit that will show you the competency of our team, which is, consists of not only myself as a member of the Rock Church body, but also an architect, Townsend Engineering, and then we have two construction firms for bid, Estes and Built to Sue, well-established team. So if there's any question in the competency of this team to get this done, I think that that would silence it. So that being said, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate your consideration on this process.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? State your name and address or ward, please.
Danny J. Lorenson, pastor of the church he's talking about. I believe I'm in Ward Seven, but anyway, just wanted to mention, obviously, you know why we're here, deal with this whole property thing. And my position on this has been the same, you know, we're not mad at the city, we're excited to work with the city, I love this city, I was born in this city, I've given my life to this city, I'll probably die in this city, or in Hawaii, one of those places. But this whole thing has just totally caught us off guard. I want you to understand that, and this has been a long thought-out process in my heart, I'm the one that donated the land to the city, but there was a process to that. Obviously, buying the land, at one point, I had to pay the land down with my personal resources, $65,000, so the bank would release the land so I could give it to the church. So that's been in the process for a long time. I finally got to the place where I could do that. When I bought the land, I knew it was zoned residential, so I knew it would work, and then we had the, forgive me for saying so, zoning is for life thing. That really caught me off guard when I heard that statement, because if that's the case, we don't even have to have this meeting, because we had the zoning we needed in the first place. But that's not the case. So it changed, we wanted to change it back to what it was, because we think it's the right thing to do. And the thing I've really wrestled with is the justice, the right and wrong. I'm a pastor. I feel like I have a pretty good grip on right and wrong, and if someone comes to your house and says, hey, this is your property, but you can't do anything with it, you can't do anything with it you want to do, then all of a sudden, it's not my property, it's someone else's property. So I have to get that question answered. I have given the property to Rock Church. Now, is it their property, or whose property is it? And if someone really wants it that bad, why don't they buy it? You know, buy it, and then they can do whatever they want with it, kind of thing, because we had to buy it, I had to buy it. So, you know, I think everyone knows we're trying to do good things in the city. We have, the Rock Church is 19 years old, we started it with 13 people in our living room, and we're going strong. We're going to keep doing that. No matter what, we're going to keep doing that. So that's not going to stop. We've made a huge impact. I have thousands of friends in this city. I think most of them like me. There's two that don't, but I won't mention their names tonight. But anyway, there's just been a lot in this and to have the zoning changed and never, I was never notified about that, no matter what happened. I feel like as the owner at the time, I should have been notified about that. And I looked through every piece of, I save all of my paperwork, because I own a property, rental property, and I save everything. So I dumped out the whole box on the floor and went through every paper just to see if there's anything mentioning that this property was going to be rezoned. And there was nothing. And I don't read the paper, okay? I don't read the Quad Cities Act. Sorry if there's anyone here who works for the Quad Cities Act. I watch the news, but I just don't read the newspaper. Maybe that's a, maybe it's time to rethink that. I don't know if that's our only means of communication, but I never read it, never saw it, didn't know nothing about it. So it happened. Here we are. Our big thing was, we thought we were going to have trouble getting the easement. That was our biggest concern. And SCI from Texas, who owns Memorial Park, they were, they've been amazing about giving us the easement. We thought that would be the hard part, but the hard part's been here. So, you know, with all due respect, I pray you to reconsider, think this through, and let us keep being a blessing to this city. I'm here to love people in this city. That's what I do. That's what I'm going to keep doing. Like I said, no matter what happens, and I think we could use a little more love in our cities, so I'll leave it at that. Bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll open it up to council. Alderman Jobjin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have a question for staff, and this may be an 11th hour question, and I'm not sure if the petitioners are open to something like this. Have we looked at some sort of land swap where maybe the city of Davenport has land available that would be zoned for this purpose, that might be of equal value, not cost the petitioner any extra to develop their church? And have we explored any options like that? So anyone in staff that'd be willing to take that one?
Or Berkeley Development and Planning Administrator. We have not looked into that as an option. We could see if there's some land that might be a viable option as an alternative.
Thank you. I don't have anything else. Just a comment. I've mentioned before, you know, some of my conflicts on this have been the order of operations in which, you know, the petitioners may have not been properly notified, you know, in the way I see things and the hardship that that's created to them. The more I've thought about this, the more I am leaning towards, you know, voting next week to approve the rezoning. But if we can, maybe as, at the 11th hour, look at some other win-win option. I don't think that would hurt either. Bye.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. You know, I think this is a great project and the city continues to try to improve our communication. You know, we're, we do have some spots that we fail and we're working constantly to improve that. It's, the church is there. They've done everything you could expect. They got, the neighbors are completely supportive of it. For the council to not allow this to move forward, I think would be shameful.
Alderwoman Dickman.
Per Alderman Jobjin's suggestion, you know, there are a lot of areas in Davenport that could use a little extra love. And when I said the phrase, the zoning is for life, I mean like churches that were built 30 years ago by wonderful groups of people who helped that part of the community a lot, but then organizations change and sometimes maintenance isn't kept up. And, you know, there might be an area just like that where there's already a building standing with parking space and roads available and utilities built and all those things already in place in an area of Davenport that really needs the love. So if staff could spend some time exploring an option where the church could serve as many people as possible and we could preserve some open space while also revitalizing an area of the city, I think that would, you know, be the most ideal situation if possible. Thank you.
Alderman Miller.
Thank you, Chair. I think that one of the things that really stays with me here is, you know, it's the order of operations issue. And frankly, I worry that we may be losing sight of the vision that was really instituted. I mean, even if we say we can give them land that is unused or that would be equal value or give them a property of a church that has been previously used and be repurposed again, what was clear to me in the visit that I had with Rock Church was that they have a long-term vision to, that was hatched a long time ago. And they have plans drawn up for that particular piece of property that is specific to that piece of property. Their plans are specific to that plot of land. Now, I am no libertarian. No one's ever accused me of that. I don't, I don't really buy into Lockian rights. And I do understand the purpose and the meaning behind open space. But on the other hand, I do have an understanding of frankly, what's just and, you know, what constitutes justice. And having those long-term plans and a vision towards applying it to something that you want to build as a contribution to your city, that has to mean something to us. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else to comment, this item will remain on discussion and we will vote on it next week. It's final and third consideration. Item number two is also a third consideration ordinance for case REZ 21-03 being the request to Build to Suit on behalf of Elmore Storage, LLC to rezone 6403 Elmore Avenue from CE Elmore Corners to C3 General Commercial District to allow for the expansion of the existing outdoor storage units. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Is anyone from council wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Alderwoman Lee, will you please set the agenda for us?
I'd be pleased to. Let's place item one on discussion and item two on consent. I move.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That concludes community development this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp, Alderwoman Lee. The next area is public safety. Alderman Jobjin and Alderwoman Dickman will discuss. Alderman Jobjin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three items under public safety. For item number one, I will read all of the components and then ask for public and council comment. So item number one, resolution approving street, lane or public ground closures on the listed dates and times to hold outdoor events. Max Tavern, Carriage House, Daiquiri Factory, Kill Kenny's, The Office, Boozy's, and Analog Arcade Bar, Third Street, Bix Bash Music Festival Downtown, 9:00 AM Friday, July 23, 2021, 12:00 PM. Sunday, July 25, 2021. Closures, Third Street between Ripley and Brady Streets, Main and Harrison Streets, north and south of Third Street to the alleys. Northbound Main Street will be open 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Saturday, July 24, 2021, as the Bix Detour Route. Next, Front Street Brewery, Crafted QC, Bootleg Hill, Honey Meads, Barrel House, Stomp Box Brewing, Theo &amp; Company, and Backwater CrossFit. Party on Pershing Downtown, 10:00 AM Friday, July 23, 2021, to 11:00 PM Saturday, July 24, 2021. Closures, Pershing Avenue from River Drive to East Second Street, Emerson Place between Perry Street and Pershing Avenue, East West Alley from Pershing Avenue to Iowa Street between East Second Street and River Drive. Next, Danview Inn, Bix Celebration, 410 East Second Street, 6:00 AM Saturday, July 24, 2021, to 12:00 AM Sunday, July 25, 2021. Closure, Iowa Street from East Second Street to East Third Street. Next, Anton Connect, Vandevere East Good Neighborhood Project Block Party, East Denison Avenue, Saturday, July 31, 2021, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Closure, East Denison Avenue from 125 East Denison Avenue to Pershing Avenue. And last, under this item, Village of East Davenport Business Association Wine Walk, Village of East Davenport, Saturday, August 21, 2021, 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Closures, East 11th Street from Mound Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Christie Street from East 11th Street north to the alley, Jersey Ridge Road from East 11th Street north to the alley. Anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Council? This item will move on. Item number two, again, I will read all items or all components before asking for public and council comment. We have, number two, motion approving noise variance requests for events on the listed dates and times. Harv Sultan, party 906 North Pine Street, Saturday, July 17, 2021, 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, outdoor music over 50 dB. Next, Circle Tap, private birthday party on the patio, 1345 West Locust Street, Saturday, July 17, 2021, 6:00 PM to 10:30 PM, outdoor band over 50 dB. Next, Max Tavern, Carriage House, Daiquiri Factory, and Kill Kenny's, Third Street, Bix Bash Music Festival Downtown, Ripley Street to Harrison Street, 6:00 PM Friday, July 23, 2021, to 12:00 AM Saturday, July 24, 2021, and 11:00 AM Saturday, July 24, 2021, to 12:00 AM Sunday, July 25, 2021, outdoor music band over 50 dB. Next, The Office, Boozy's, and Analog Arcade Bar, Bix Fest Downtown, Friday, July 23, 2021, 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and Saturday, 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM, outdoor music band over 50 dB. Next, Front Street Brewery, Crafted QC, Bootleg Hill, Honey Meads, Barrel House, Stomp Box Brewing, Theo &amp; Company, and Backwater CrossFit. Party on Pershing Downtown, 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM Friday, July 23, 2021, and 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Saturday, July 24, 2021, outdoor music band over 50 dB. Next, Danview Inn, Bix Celebration, 410 East Second Street, 5:00 PM Friday, July 23, 2021, to 12:00 AM Saturday, July 24, 2021, and 10:00 AM Saturday, July 24, 2021, to 12:00 AM Sunday, July 25, 2021, outdoor music band over 50 dB. Next, Tyler Mitchell Bags &amp; Brews, Lindsay Park, 2200 East 11th Street, Saturday, August 14, 2021, 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM, outdoor music over 50 dB. And last, under this item, Village of East Davenport Business Association Wine Walk, Village of East Davenport, Saturday, August 21, 2021, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, outdoor music over 50 dB. Anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Council? That item move on. And then the last item, motion approving beer and liquor license applications for new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location transfer, et cetera, as well as annual license renewals. These are listed for your view. I will not read them aloud. Anyone from comment wishing to, anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Council? All right. Alderwoman Dickman, would you please set the agenda?
I move that all items be placed on consent and I request that everyone celebrate responsibly.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobjin and Alderwoman Dickman. The next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Dorman will lead that discussion. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 17 items this evening for public works. The first item is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2021 Kraken Seat Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Archer Court Resurfacing Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and cost for the Eastern Avenue Resurfacing Project, 43rd Street to 46th Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding the contract for the Johnson Avenue Reconstruction Project. Is there anyone, NJ Miller Incorporated of Vettendorf in the amount of $116,692.50. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding the contract for the CDBG Replenishment Group One Hoover Appomattox and Ripley Reconstruction Project to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of $920,724.44. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding the contract for the West 54th Street Reconstruction Project to Five Cities Construction Company of Coal Valley, Illinois in the amount of Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding the contract for the River Heritage Park Phase Three Project to Build Bruce Builders of Eldridge in the amount of $749,746.18. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution awarding the contracts for the FY 2022 Sewer Lateral Repair Program totaling $810,000 to five contractors and allowing the Public Works Director, Assistant City Administrator, the ability to increase quantities for each contract within the capital improvement project budget constraints. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution accepting work completed under the Hillendale-Sloper Town Intersection Project by Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution accepting the work completed under the Sloper Town Reconstruction Harrison Division Project by KE Flatwork Incorporated of Eldridge, Iowa in the amount of $901,037.27. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a resolution accepting work completed under the East 38th Street Reconstruction Spring to Bell Project by McLennock Trucking and Escavating of Silvis, Illinois in the amount of $230,145.70. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a resolution accepting work completed under the Public Works Fire Training Site Project by Valley Construction of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 13 is a resolution accepting work completed under the West 13th Street Reconstruction Project by Five Cities Construction of Coal Valley, Illinois in the amount of $591,600.58. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 14 is a resolution accepting work completed under the FY 2021 Sidewalk Program by Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Vettendorf, Iowa in the amount of $167,434.10. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 15 is a motion accepting work completed under the City Hall Security Upgrade Project by Precision Builders of Vettendorf, Iowa in the amount of $95,969.26. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 16 is a motion awarding the contract for the Sunderland Trail Repairs Project to Valley Construction Company of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of $79,930. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Jobjin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I received an email from a resident of the 6th Ward today, and since she's here in the audience this evening, I wanted to ask the question, will this project address the paved path north of the parking lot there? What will, what will this project all entail?
Clay Merritt, Public Works. So this will address the portion of the project, it says the trail's coming down the hill as it's sloping. It's what our Parks Department has kind of cordoned off. This will address that particular section.
So the question, or the section I'm asking about?
I think there are two different sections, if it's correct in my head. But I will double check with you. But I will double check with you and get back tomorrow.
Will the bridge project address?
The bridge project that's going on now is just simply the bridge.
Okay. So no is the answer to that.
I believe so, but I'll double back and I'll check with you tomorrow morning.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Father. Anyone else? Seeing none, that item will move on. And item number 17 is a motion accepting the Federal Corona Response and Relief Supplement Appropriations Act grant of $23,000 and approving the associated grant agreement between the City of Davenport and the Federal Aviation Administration. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderman Mattson. Mayor Mattson.
Yeah, I just want to say and just highlight, the amount of money that's being spent on construction projects and the different contractors just on this one meeting is pretty impressive. Thank you, Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was gonna, that was what I was gonna say. Anybody notice we just spent millions of dollars and we do this every two weeks, so...
I apologize. Yeah. We just need to continue to tell. You asked us to do construction progress against streets, boy, we do them.
So Alderman Dorman, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I move to place all 17 items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The agenda is set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Dorman. And now to finance, Alderman Condon and Alderman Miller will lead this discussion to pay for all this stuff. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three items on finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution awarding the contract for the architectural and engineering services for the Fire Station 3 project to OPN Architects of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed $382,600. Before I open this up to public comment, I'd like to invite our CFO, Mallory Merritt, up to give us an overview of this and introduce some folks from OPN.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mallory Merritt, Assistant City Administrator and CFO. This is a very exciting project to bring forward tonight. This is one that we've been talking about for a long time. You may remember that the relocation of Fire Station 3 was actually a key recommendation of the Matrix Consulting Group's Public Safety Operations Study to us several years ago. The relocation of this station will also allow us to service some of the increased growth in the northern part of our community. We're really looking forward to the opportunity to make this signature investment in this north-south corridor and contribute to the overall revitalization and reinvestment strategy of that area. So with that, after a very exhaustive due diligence process, we do recommend OPN Architects of Cedar Rapids for the award of the design contract. They have a very extensive civic portfolio. They've done fantastic work not only across Iowa but in the Midwest, so they're familiar with all of our elements, and I can say proudly that we would look forward as staff to the opportunity to work with them. Tonight, David is here with us, the company principal, and then also the interior designer extraordinaire, Mindy. So very happy to have them here with us tonight and look forward to bringing this project over the finish line as a team.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? This item will move on. Item number two is a motion awarding the contract for the Junior Theater Lighting Upgrade to Top Notch Productions, Inc. of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $59,909.60. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? And item number three is a motion approving the purchase of uplifting equipment for five police department SUVs from Kel-Tec, Inc. of Baxter, Iowa, in the amount of $71,397.30 from the state of Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Next on our agenda, we have purchases from $10,000 to $50,000. I apologize, we don't read each of those out loud, but they are listed here for your information. I can tell you are all endurance athletes. Thank you for sticking with us. That concludes finance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. The next area?
I breezed right through that. I apologize. Alderman Miller, would you please set the agenda?
I propose and recommend we place all three items on the consent agenda for this meeting.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That concludes finance.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Miller. So the next item is, are there any other ordinances, motions, or resolutions? There are none for this evening, so the next item, is there any public with business? So if there's any public that would like to discuss anything other than what's on that was on the agenda, please step to the podium, please give your name, ward or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes. Appreciate you coming to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mattson, Council staff. I'm Ben Lloyd. My address is 1611 Elmore in Davenport, 6th Ward. I've been a Davenport resident since age four. I'm a dentist, I'm married, and I have two daughters. I went to Davenport Public Schools and competed in athletics. I'm now a cyclist and I often commute three and a half miles to my office. I am one of many bike commuters, as I've come to know through many years living in Davenport. My commute to work is mostly a northern route from south of Locust to just south of 53rd Street in Davenport. I cross Kimberly Road at the rather new stoplight at Forest Road. I follow traffic laws and wait my turn to cross. I often see drivers confused or surprised to see me there, not knowing whether they should yield and let me go before them if they're turning left and I'm going straight. Yes, they are supposed to let me go first, just like you would a car. That does not stop many of them from quickly accelerating to turn in front of me so they don't have to wait a few more seconds than they would if I were in a car. This brings me to my purpose in speaking to you this evening. Look around the room. We have organized here in a stand of solidarity, cyclists, runners, walkers, citizens of Davenport. We chose to wear red. When Alex Marietta attempted to do the very thing I and many others do daily, cycle across Kimberly, he was riding a red bike. He did not make it across, as I'm sure we have all come to know by now. When I volunteered to speak to this committee, I promised to deliver a message. Our message is this: Give us this safe, dedicated, north-south route through Davenport. Plans for this route are outlined on page 28 of the Davenport Go Plan from January 2019. The Eldridge Trail, as it is called, discusses north-south passage along a rail line, Canadian Pacific, hopefully bypassing Kimberly Road in a safe manner. We want to see this plan put into action as soon as possible. We certainly understand it takes funds to do so, and we know that plans have been in the works for some time now. Today's Quotity Times article stated $4 million of COVID-19 relief funds have been earmarked for this specific trail. In addition to this, we ask that any pedestrian bypass of Kimberly bear the name of Alex Marietta to commemorate his life as a cyclist and help us to remember why we work to prevent future incidents like the one that ended his life June 3. In case you haven't noticed, Davenport residents are purchasing and riding more bikes by the day. We do not need to have any more lives put at risk because of inaction or inability to come to an agreement. Again, I ask you to look around as you travel through our city. You will see more bikes. One might be ridden by me, your next-door neighbor, your child, your best friend, or anyone else whose life should be valued and protected by our safe trail system. This steady influx of cyclists demands improved methods of travel in town to benefit not just cyclists but pedestrians, those in wheelchairs, children, or any other non-motor travelers. Please help us out and give us a reason to be proud of our city. You will notice so much more than just safer conditions for all. You will have our unending gratitude, and you will have contributed to improving the health and safety of your constituents and those who voted to put you to work for them. Please expedite the funding for this north-south passage through our city. Thank you.
Anyone else? Harry? Okay. Please.
All right. Phil Handel, Nashville, Tennessee, and also Davenport, Iowa. This will not be about the riverfront tonight. I want to be talking about something else, something I talked about in the past, but I guess it's about the end of the line for this particular project, but the Urbane 210 apartment building is, I understand, about ready to open. It's on East Second Street, and a question that I've had is one that I've asked in the past, and I guess I still really hadn't gotten a good answer, and perhaps we'll get some good answers at the end of it, but regarding the purchase of the land by the developer from the City of Davenport, I've done a Freedom of Request information request about, I'm assuming the city at one point had an appraiser, either the city's assessor or appraiser or any dependent, appraiser appraised that property before the property was sold. I know in the past I have also talked to a member of the city staff who told me that in their opinion, the land was only worth the $250,000 that the developer purchased that land for. It's about 195 by 122 feet, just a little more than a half acre. So I went down today just to get a bit more information beyond what I had in the FOIA request, and that was, went down to Scott County, talked to a plat room, talked to a nice woman, Kelly Lutz, who showed me the printout of that, and she actually dug in to that particular piece of property, and it turns out that it became a city piece of property in 1995, a good 26 years ago. And it was purchased by the city from Mid-America Energy. If you may recall, Mid-America had, before they changed their name, they had a six-story office building on that site. When they built their new building in the early 90s, it was demolished, and I guess at some point, Mid-America Energy sold that property to the City of Davenport. To me, it was always future development for the river center, because convention centers always go obsolete, and if you want to extend the life of a convention center, you do something, and so that would have been something that could have been done. And it turned out in 1995, that half acre was sold by Mid-America Energy to the City of Davenport for a total of $1 million. $1 million in 1995. And then in 2019, council, using a provision of the state of Iowa's Disaster Workforce Housing Act, Disaster Workforce Housing Act, because of all the residential properties that were lost because of the 2019 flood, obtained a million dollars, and please, at the end of this meeting, if anybody objects or has any question about what is, the City of Davenport was to kick in a million dollars of tax credits to the developer, and then the city, the state of Iowa would also provide a million dollars. So the developer gained $2 million tax credits from the city and tax credits from the state of Iowa. So I understood there was to be no further credits to be given to that developer, but however, the land was sold to them for a quarter million dollars, a paltry quarter million dollars. The $1 million that the city paid for that land in 1995, just using a plain old Consumer Price Index, would have been $1.68 million. And that was just going up per Consumer Price Index. We all know how much more vibrant and valuable downtown Davenport land is, so it's easy to say it probably could have been a $2 million piece of land, but the City of Davenport sold it for $250,000, 12 and a half cents on the dollar. I'd like to have some answers for that at some point, and I think the citizens of Davenport would like to hear about that too, because although it's nice to have downtown residences, it's not sustainable for the city to give away land in such unfavorable terms to developers that are out of the state, out of the city. So, but the second item regarding that is the loss of green space. We had a half acre of green space, we've lost it. We need to get more green space. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Gwendolyn Lee. I'm a 3rd Ward resident and business owner, and thank you so much, Counsel and staff, for presenting the different bike trail options and the plans and the work that will hopefully be funded. We're very excited to be here and to advocate for the $4 million to expand the city's trails up to Leclerc, oh, excuse me, up to Leclerc, up to Eldridge. But I want to make you aware of, not only is it for our neighbors and our friends, our children, and our colleagues, it's also for our community as a whole. There was a Trails and Safe Communities Study of almost 400 trails. They found lower vandalism rates and burglary rates on trails, on properties adjacent to those trails. This was in the late 90s, early 2000s. So not only are we looking at how to address different items of crime and burglary in our company, or in our, in our community, this could assist with that. There's also been a study from the Journal of Parks and Recreation Administration. In a study of over 9,000 home sales, they found that homes located within a half mile of a trail sold for 11% more than identical homes that were located further away from trails, thus increasing their tax base. So I just wanted to bring a few quantitative items to mind to give a concrete example of what increasing the trail system can do for our community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll ask the audience to please hold from clapping. Thank you. I appreciate the enthusiasm, but anyone else? Okay?
I'm Guy Robert, resident of Ward 1 at 1227 Waverly Road. I'm not a cyclist, but I'm interested in anything that I think will improve Davenport and make it an even greater place to live than it is now. I plowed through the Davenport Go Report for a few days. It is an excellent document. I urge you to refamiliarize yourself with it if you're not already, but I was encouraged by many of the comments of you tonight that I realized that it isn't just gathering dust, that many of you are paying attention to it and work is being done on it. I wish we had a better way to communicate. I was great to hear from Public Works about what is actually being done, because I wasn't aware of any of that. But I just urge you to keep moving forward with that. As was mentioned, you have to kind of take baby steps before you can walk, you know, one block of sidewalk at a time, shared trail, whatever, but just keep at it, and we're just going to do even a better place than we are now. And if you want to start a multi-use path on Waverly Road, I'll turn the first shovel, if you let me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
I've just got a prepared statement. A number of people talked about...
Sir, if you could give your...
Tom Donahue, Ward 8.
Thank you.
I'm also an advocate with Quotity Bicycle Club. A number of people talked about making our city safer for cycling and for walking. My comments are a little more general in nature. When we've advocated for similar things to this in the past, it's felt a lot like swimming against the current, which is really difficult. And sometimes you wonder why so many of my fellow citizens just seem to be adamantly opposed to things to make cycling, walking safer and easier. I've got a little bit of insight. Between the end of World War II and 1970s, freeway construction, suburban development, and private car ownership exploded across this country and across Western Europe as well. And this is the American dream, so we were told, but that dream came at a nightmarish cost. Lots more people are getting killed in and by cars. The number of people killed in cars, crashes in 72, 1972 alone, is comparable to the total US combat deaths in Vietnam. In the early 70s, the Western world was put in a timeout due to an oil embargo, creating a pause for us to reflect. In the US, consensus was that motor vehicle deaths were a justifiable, although unfortunate, cost of progress. By contrast, in the Netherlands, whose development had been really similar to ours up to that point, their citizens concluded that the cost was not acceptable, and they said enough, it was too high. The Dutch decided to order their cities, their infrastructure, their financing, their laws, more around people and less around... and less around automobiles. Today, the Netherlands, 50 years later, is one of the safer countries to bike, walk and drive in the world. The US continues to be an increasingly dangerous place to travel on the road by all modes. So what? At the root cause of this problem is one of attitude. When we reached the fork in the road in 1970, the Dutch decided people are more important than cars. Unfortunately, we decided, I'm part of that society, cars are more important than people. Cars are more important than people are. That attitude shaped urban development for the last 50 years or so. The good news though is attitudes can change. People hold attitudes in their minds and in their hearts and they can change. And Mothers Against Drunk Drivers proved that. So some of you may have family members or acquaintances, friends that have been either killed or seriously injured in car crashes. I have too. So I ask you to think real hard about really what's important to you and to our city. So we've got a choice to make. Do we keep prioritizing cars or do we want to prioritize people? That's something to think about. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Mike Goodrum. I live on the Illinois side. I just want to say thank you for doing the improvements on the bike path. I am a new cyclist since February, me and my wife. We, when I first went in and bought my bike, they gave me a map and it was all the bike routes and everything in the city. As a driver in the city, I was not aware of a lot of the bike paths that are on the city streets. Not a lot of them are marked. They're not there. Or the lines are gone, can't see them. I, as a driver, you as a driver, I'm new to the area. I've only been here about six years. So that map actually opened my eyes as a driver where bikes are. I didn't know. I truly didn't know. I don't think it's a lot to ask for markings for bikes awareness, you know, safe. We all want to be safe. Markings on the road, I wouldn't think paint would be a lot, you know, just labor costs, I get it, you know. But how much is paint versus how many bicyclists are going to get hit? Every action has a reaction. No action also has a reaction. So if you don't do anything or we're not able to do anything, then it causes bicyclists' lives, you know. And if I, as a driver from out of town, don't know where the bike paths are, how many people know where the bike paths are? So I think some paint would open up a lot, a huge amount. And just that map from the kindness of somebody at a bike store handed it to me, opened my eyes completely on the roads for bicyclists. So, thank you for your time and just something to think about.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Patrick Street and I'm a resident of East Moline. However, my wife Jeanne and I commute from Campbell's Island into Northwest Davenport at least three days a week, about 100 mile round trip per week. I've been doing that for 10 years. So we are very familiar with the connectors from River, the River path to the Duck Creek path. And the two that are listed at least on Google Maps as bike routes, Marquette Street, maybe you've heard it before, but it's essentially unridable. I see that you're doing some construction on it. Thank you. That's good. I hope that part of the construction addresses the sewer grates that are parallel to the road right now, which means bicycle tires can easily get caught. So, so hopefully, I'm glad to hear about the new connector. That's great. But especially Marquette that then goes on up to Washington that connects with the Duck Creek Parkway. Sure hope that that's on the agenda as well, since people who use Google Maps, that's one of the two main routes. The other, of course, being Main Street that goes up through the park over to Fair Street. And again, Fair Street is not very bicycle friendly, though it is a designated bike route because of the, the way the stop signs are kind of sporadic, erratic. The parking on the side streets makes a lot of blind corners. I mean, we ride these, you know, a couple of times a day and have for a long, long time and just it's great that we've not been hit. We've had many near misses and, and we're cyclists too that obey all the signs, do the absolute best we can to follow the rules of the road. But anything that can be done to improve those existing routes would be greatly appreciated as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Anna Perry and I live in Bettendorf but have spent the majority of my career as a physical therapist, serving the Western Davenport region. And so cycling's really important to me for many, many reasons, but part of it is because it's part of my profession and my niche practice is treating cyclists. So I am so excited about this safe north-south passage that's already in the works. But my clinic currently is on five points and it's actually really hard for my bike clients to get there because locust on a good day is crazy, but locust in the summer day in Division Street is a little bit hectic. So actually, clients have a really hard time making it to my clinic. So I'm really looking forward to this project because it's so important ensuring the safety, but also looking forward into how we can use that Davenport Go program to make it a more commuter-friendly place. Because I myself also would like to ride my bike to work, but first of all, getting up Division Street Hill is a little rough and I'd be kind of sweaty. But I would be sweaty if I was safe. And I just don't feel like I have a safe route at this point to even get up the really sweaty hill. And then finally, the personal part to me is I'm a mother of two small children, five and two. And we, up until very recently, couldn't even like ride our bikes to an ice cream shop in Davenport safely. Now that we have the one down at Freight House, like that's great. But we couldn't go to Whitey's safely unless we went to the Bettendorf one. So help my kids go to an ice cream shop by bicycle by looking forward to, or looking forward and in the future on how to make it a more pedestrian and bicycle and runner-friendly place. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I am Jean Marietta. I live in Bettendorf and my son was killed last month at the cross street on Kimberly and Davenport. And the reason I came, I just wanted to put a personal touch to what you're doing, just for the north-south passage. Alex biked many years. Tomorrow is, would have been his 41st birthday. And I guess what I'm after is safety for everybody. That's why we're all here. And not only that, before we get the north-south passage done, I would like to see a little more crackdown on speeding on Kimberly and on the other streets, just to help us along to people that are crossing the streets. And Alex was a very safe bicyclist. He biked for many years. In fact, he was, he was, when he was a month old, he was on a backpack on my bike. So back then, we did that. And the only way he had to cross to get to the bike path was to cross Kimberly. He had the green light. And so it was just a terrible accident. And so I'm just asking for maybe more until the bike paths are built better or more of them, that we have a little more crackdown on the speeders and people that ran the red lights. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry for your loss. Anyone else?
I'm Dave Ray, president of Quad City Bike Club. Okay. Live in Ward 6 and on Hamilton Drive. And one thing, the folks that have presented are right spot on. But what I want to offer to you is the Quad City Bike Club, if you need help looking at trails, bike lanes, charles, how to make things safer, we've got 600 members that can help. We've got people that ride in Europe, experienced in riding in Netherlands. I ride to, sorry to say, I leave Davenport January and February every year and ride on the West Coast in Encidus, Oceanside and Carlsbad, old cities, not as old as Davenport, but all incorporated in the 1800s. They have figured out how to make their old parts of the town safe for cycling. And definitely a different culture. Those folks out there have learned to live with cyclists. Cyclists have learned to live with drivers, if you will. And we're just out there, give you the example, four-lane highway, my wife and I ride 101 up and down the ocean. Big sign, six feet, cyclists have the right for the full lane on a highway. And drivers obey it. It's totally a different culture. And as you can tell, I have a hard time talking. So with that, again, I offered the club, if you need help, we've helped Moline. We have people sit down in their streets committee that provide assistance to them. The Bettendorf Trails Committee, we have people from our club on that. I've written in the last three years endorsements on funding on the Illinois side of the river for them to get grants for their bike paths and that. So we would definitely support if you ask. Okay?
Thank you.
My name is Mark Hendricks. I grew up in Davenport and I still work in Davenport. But I live in Moline and I've been commuting by bicycle from Moline either to Davenport or to Pleasant Valley for 30 years. And I'm only standing up here because there's one small portion that we've kind of skipped over. And Dr. Miller, you, you mentioned it earlier. There's a large and growing segment of our society that will never again be able to afford a safe and reliable automobile. More and more people will be commuting by bicycle. I do not personally own an automobile. Okay? I'm happy. Don't mean that in a negative sense. As people do that, we, there's just going to be more conflict. I'd really like to see us look at how fast we really need these speed limits to be. You cannot cross all of Kimberly Road at 60 miles an hour, one minute faster than you can at 30. Think about that. People are dying or at least being seriously injured to save a minute? That's pretty crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have pre, okay?
My name is Terry Bush. I live on Thornwood Avenue. I live in the third ward. Going to change the subject a little bit here. My favorite subject this time here is fireworks. You know, we've had this benedebriary of fireworks the last two weeks. My dog won't go out of the house now. She's scared to death of the fireworks. I got to clean up my yard every morning from the fireworks. They're still going on. They were going on last night. The 3rd of July, 4th of July is like a war zone. And we need to do something about these fireworks. Now, I've been told by this council before that it's not your problem. Go, go talk to the state. Well, I found out that the state allows cities to ban the discharge of fireworks in their city. It's their option. So I'm here to ask this council to take action to stop this fireworks. You know, this, these things are dangerous. People, you know, I walk my dog and there's, it's litter all over the ground from the fireworks. I got stuff in my yard from the fireworks. This is going on 2:00 in the morning. The other day, I had to take my dog for a walk at 4:00 in the morning because she wouldn't go out because of the fireworks at 2:00 in the morning. You know, this stuff is, this stuff is out of hand. So I'm asking the council, you know, my understanding Clinton does not allow discharge of fireworks in Clinton. I understand the way I understand that you can't keep, stop the failed, sale of fireworks in this city, but you can stop the discharge, make it illegal to discharge fireworks. And that's what I'd like you to do. And so, you know, it's, this stuff is, you know, we've all read the story about the goalie, the hockey goalie for the Columbus Blue Jackets. They got killed by a firework that hit him in the chest, misguided firework, killed him. I mean, this stuff is dangerous. What you can buy at that crossroads up there is pretty powerful stuff. Okay? And then what gets me is if you really like the rocket's red glare, you think that's really cool? And I guess we all do, you know? The fireworks that go on all day long are these bombs. They don't have any red glare. They're just, they go up there, make a big noise, rattle your windows, scare the dogs. There's no, there's no purpose to these things other than concussion. Okay? So I would like you to consider to do something about this firework problem. And I'm going to be talking to Cindy Winkler soon about the next legislative session. Maybe we can do something about this, this craziness of this fireworks. So with that, and also I'd like to know if there's some way we can get a resolution at the next election to let the people of the city of Davenport vote to decide if they want to stop this fireworks, discharge of fireworks in the city. That's their choice. So, okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Here, okay?
Dave Kenny, second ward. Changing topics here. I was here a while back talking about the former food forest at the Black Hawk Gardens. And I was hoping I wouldn't have to come back, but I didn't have much time to talk at the end. There's some catchment basins or rain basins that remain that have a lot of plantings around them. And I talked to the city liaison with the DNR, Amy Kay, and she said that she was going to talk to Alderman Dunn and, and Parks Director Bets and Tubbs about what to do with these because a lot of the stuff down there has been destroyed. As you may have seen some emails I sent you or been following it, the city wanted to clean it up and so a lot of the trees and bushes got mowed over by the city. And I don't know if you, some of you may got an email or two from me. I apologize for sending three or four. I sent it with my phone and I can only send four pictures at a time. So, anyway. So since that time, and I was making a plea to save the native section and the far south-east section, and that didn't happen. City staff came in and mowed probably, I would say 60% of it off. There was, you know, raspberry bushes and blackberries and aronia berries and plum trees. I think three, the only thing left that I see, there was pawpaw trees. The only thing left were some gooseberries and three plum trees. There was probably 15 pawpaw trees removed. And I could, the parks, and I know people have different visions about what a park's supposed to be, but to me, bluegrass between trees this high doesn't need to be mowed around each tree. It dies in the winter. It doesn't look bad if it's not weedy. And a lot of this was like that. So I didn't, don't understand. We had a meeting, Alderman Dunn and Parks Director. And we had a meeting, um, Alderman Dunn and Parks Director and, uh, someone from the Parks Advisory. And it was kind of contentious, you know? My, my ideas of what, what should stay, and they were like, well, what's this? What's that? This is on the berm. This has got to go. That looks bad. I'm like, why? You know? I mean, I don't understand it. And, but they did what their vision of what they wanted to look like. So the next, so, next thing to deal with, and I'm disappointed with that, but the next thing to deal with is around these catchment basins. And I was told that, uh, by Amy Kay, that you've got to mow it with a 10-foot mower. Well, where in some of the other parks do we have to do everything with a 10-foot mower? I see them at Emi's weed whacking around cement poles that are like four foot apart. I see weed whacking done all over. Why can't we do some of that here? I know the city parks has a lot of work to do, but to, to say that means you, you, you can't really have anything close to each other. So I'd like this, these rain basins to, when they're cleaned out, they're full of trees. I, I think Alderman Dunn agreed, and he wants to get it cleaned out. And when those get cleaned out, the plantings around there, um, can be saved to provide food for the community. And, uh, you know, some, some of the stuff was destroyed. I've talked to some neighbors. They didn't really support this native section being, uh, removed as much as it, as it was. One of the neighbors said her daughter used to go down there and pick blackberries, but they're gone now, raspberries, they're gone. Um, so that's, that's something I'd like, this may not happen soon, but when it happens, or I, I'd like to work with the staff if there's some way that some of the members of the food forest or volunteers from the community can help maintain that so we can keep those 50 or plus trees around these rain basins. So with that said, um, well, let's see, is there anything else? Well, I want to thank Alderman Dunn for starting that park. He's the one that built it and he's, uh, without that, there wouldn't be a park down there. And he's, he's, he started that years ago before the food forest was involved. I did want to say that. And, uh, he did, uh, get somebody to till up the gardens. We have a vegetable garden there and we're starting to fill in all those beds there. Uh, he also, I don't know if you're aware, he does a lot of work. He's feeding people a different way than I am. I'm feeding them with stuff that's going to last for 50 years where he's doing it every day with the mini fridge down there at Roosevelt School. And I think it's a great thing. I do want to recognize him for that. And, um, well, I, I hope that, uh, that, like I said, I hope that the rest of these things can be maintained there. And I will bring you back some pawpaws. We found some more that are actually growing and it's going to be the only place in Quad Cities on public land that you can find pawpaws. And if anybody wants any current berries, I have some here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Joseph Lukowski. I was born and raised in the Quad Cities. I went to Alderman High School and then I went to Iowa State and completed my Bachelor of Science in Horticulture. I started a business in the state of Iowa called Get Joe Plants, kind of like Get Your Plants, but Get Joe Plants. And so the purpose of this business is, we'll be later discussed, but here today, sir, I want to talk about-
Sir, your address or where you're from?
I am from the Quad Cities. Right now I'm living in Ames.
Thank you.
I'm from the Quad Cities.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I'm from Ames, Iowa, or excuse me, I live in Ames, Iowa now. I want to thank all of the ca, uh, staff and council members for being stewards of the land. I'm very excited right now, so I just calm down a little bit here. Okay. So why am I here? So back in 2014, I helped plant the food forest because I thought it was a good idea, right? And, you know, globally as a society, we let a lot of food go to waste. Food gets thrown away. People are starving away, stuck in cycles of poverty. For example, I looked at the U.S. Census statistics for Scott County and the city of Davenport. I noticed that 82.6% of the persons in poverty in Scott County, Iowa, live in Davenport. And 68% of the person under 65 years old with a disability in Scott County, Iowa, lives in Davenport. Also, according to the government website for Iowa data, since January 2011, over $463 million in assistance payments, food assistance payments have been allocated to Story County, the second largest amount in the state of Iowa. Over the last 10 years, there is an average of 31,402 recipients on food stamps per year in Scott County. That is one out of every five people in this county that is on food stamps. They can't even afford money to go to the grocery store and get healthy food. So that's a sad thing, you know? That's not anyone's fault specifically. That's just what we have as a global problem. It's not specific to Scott County or Davenport. I'm not trying to point fingers here. Another statistic here would be fresh fruit prices have predicted to go up another 45% with inflation, so people can't even afford these things. All right? So with all these statistics, you mean to tell me that we want to cut down food producing trees? Now, I understand Rick Dunn started a park and it's very lovely and we want, all we want to do is work with Rick and work with the council to where we can have an agreement between the vision of the city and also the vision of the people. And I understand there was hard feelings both ways. The food forest wasn't properly maintained in some aspects and there was a difference in communication breakdown. And I'm just hoping that in the future, just like all the people with the cyclists are saying here, they want to build a safer, stable, and welcoming community here. And that would include producing food which is valuable to our society. So I also wrote here, there's dozens of food forests across the United States. The Davenport one was actually one of the biggest ones. And just because we lost a few trees in one location doesn't mean I'm any less determined to plant one in each 99 counties in every city in each one. So I'm, I'm going to do that. That's my life's purpose, to provide food for society. And I am disappointed that, you know, a couple of trees died, but I'm also very optimistic because each tree can be made into thousands. One tree can make thousands of seeds. We take that one that's left at the food forest, plant it elsewhere, someone's city, they have access to food. They have access to high-quality stuff versus a lot of the stuff in the store is, um, ecologically destructive in nature and is based on greed and stuff. And so we want to create the common, so a place of abundance where all people can have access. That's the goal. And of course, sure, we still support the farmer. We buy his cattle. We still support all these other businesses like processing and stuff. You know, it's been said, the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. And let's plant some today. Let's find areas in the city that are being underutilized, that are just being mowed down and sprayed down with pesticides that people's dogs and cyclists and people walk barefoot on. We want to make a society that's inclusive of all. I noticed today, I don't live in Davenport, but a lot of the money was going to road construction. What if just some of that money, some of those millions or hundreds of thousands of dollars that you guys just passed, what if just a tad went to like planting fruit and edible nut trees? And like, I live in Ames, it's a bicyclist-friendly community. They actually paint lines on the road where people are supposed to go. And they have signs and stuff, so. A lot of good issues tonight and I guess the ask I'm making today is can we move to make a consideration to a one-month moratorium for cutting down those existing trees? I just went down, down there with David who just spoke yesterday. There is literally pawpaws growing on the trees there. That is a tropical plant, the only tropical plant in North America. It tastes like a custard banana. It's amazing. And I helped plant some of these trees and stuff. So if we do have to make a compromise between maybe cutting some of the trees down by the catchment basin, so be it. Let's, let's just go online with how it should be, but let's also on the same hand, plant new trees and then replacements and strike a balance between the non-human other and a capitalist society. Thank you very much and have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Rick Corin. I live in Rock Island, Illinois by Augustana. I work at Genesis East in the Cardiac Cast Lab. I've been there 33 years and I commute by bike for just as many years, winter, spring, summer, fall. And, uh, in those years, I've been hit four times, two times, dorked two times, and had more close calls than you can count. And most people would probably just like, you know, after taking that much abuse would just give up and drive a car, but I'm kind of stubborn in that way, so I kind of keep doing it. And, um, so I just feel like, and the one time that I did get, the one time I was hit, I was crossing Locust Street at Duck Creek Park, uh, on the Myrtle, and I had the green light, stood there, waited for traffic to come to a stop and tried to make eye contact with the guy coming at me. I started going across, he turned right into me and hit me, broke my leg. And luckily, that's all that was, that happened because it could have taken a bad turn and I could end up like Alex, you know? Or, and then my wife and I always talk about how maybe it could have been somebody else, maybe a child walking across that street, you know, or elderly person. And, uh, the outcome might have, might not have been so good. But luckily, that's all I got was a, a broken leg, put me out of work and, uh, commissioned for four months. And, um, yeah, I was, even though I wasn't, you know, I still had mobility and was able to do things, put me in a dark, kind of a dark place, you know? I had to kind of deal with things. So, but that's all in the past and, um, I just, I feel like we're pretty, pretty privileged here. We have a lot of east-west, you know, bike transport, but north and south, yeah, we're lacking. I could definitely like to see a lot more of that. But I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the city of Davenport. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the Friends of Offworld Cycling, but, um, that was my, that's my fault because, uh, I started the, uh, club 20-some years ago, myself, my wife, and, uh, one other couple. And now it's, and most of our, um, our efforts were put into Loud Thunder. So we spent probably 10 years of building trails out there. And even though they were somewhat supportive, they kind of lacked, uh, lacked vision that I had. Cause my vision was to make the Quad Cities kind of a destination, you know, for, for cyclists, mountain bikers, bring, you know, bring people here to ride and then, uh, go out, eat, drink, and like I said, have this a destination. Well, so they just didn't, like I said, they didn't quite share my vision. And so at that point, fork was kind of at a, kind of spiraling downhill and my vision for mountain biking was kind of going, kind of dwindling. And then along came the city of Davenport, Sundarbrook. And, um, with all of your support, I mean, it's been, it's kind of skyrocketed, skyrocketed. Now we have 10 trails systems in the Quad Cities. And, uh, you know, what's Sundarbrook, Dog Park and some of the other ones. And like I said, with, without your support, your vision, and given us the ability to do what we're doing out there. I mean, I don't know the numbers or any of the facts, but from what I understand with the, with the COVID, everybody's been, you know, the, um, attendance at the parks with bikers, dog walkers, trail runners. I mean, it's, it's really, uh, has made me feel good that maybe my vision for what, you know, what I wanted it to become has kind of, kind of come to it. So anyway, I feel very confident that the city's going to, you know, follow through with this northeast or north-south, um, you know, bike, bike thing because of your vision and your support of cycling. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jerry Koiner. I live at 2311 Oklahoma Avenue in Davenport. And I just want to make a couple of comments on the program that we have down at Blackhawk I've been to just about all of the meetings that I have attended down there to see what we needed to do to make things work for, not only for the city, but for the people that live down that direction. I know Rick Dunn has, has, uh, made a complete meeting down there where everybody was down there and we kind of had conversations with everyone and, and they all seemed to want to have that, but there was no participation in getting any of this done. And Dave, I mean, Dave just, he's, that is a dedicated guy. And although he, you're in a, in a different war. And he works there. So I, I gotta give him a lot of credit for what he's doing, but one person cannot do it. They need to have community access to everyone that lives down in that area. And when they built this, um, the food forest, I've got a map here with the, how they put that together. And there's no rhyme or reason how and where and why they put the plants that they put in there. It's all over the place. So which creates a problem for the city Parks Department, for the mowing and keeping the park looking like a park. So there has been some discussion. We went down, another meeting, and we went down through all of that and kind of walked through that whole program down there, what we were going to clean up and what we weren't going, where we're going to leave and what he needed to do or what everyone needed to do down there to get things so everything would work for everyone. Well, the food forest just dropped the ball. They said they were going to do things, but they never did anything. So then we had another meeting, so this, cause all this is going on week after week and nothing is getting done. So something had to get done because the city can't mow the park, can't do the things that they want to do. So anyway, we had another meeting after that and we walked around all those things, what we're going to take out, what we're not going to take out. Everybody agreed to it and we left. And I'm just kind of a bystander there, but I take suggestions and I'll make suggestions to the park board on what I think they should do. And, um, I think that Rick Dunn had a, did a good job and, and Betsy Tubbs, I'm not sure if she's here or not, but, uh, she was doing an excellent job down there too as well. I understand what Dave is trying to accomplish down there, but they need to change the way they're doing things down there and to make that good for everybody. And it needs to be organized. And there may be some of those, like those pawpaw trees. I've never heard of a pawpaw tree until I went down there. But there was like 25 or 30 of them down there. So there aren't out of pawpaw trees. They don't need to go get anymore because there's more down there. And then all of a sudden you look in there, there's another area down there. There's raspberries, there's all kinds of stuff in there, but I wouldn't go in there because you never know, there might be alligators in there. I mean, there's weeds in there. I don't know if anybody would want to walk in there. You might want to go along the edge where we mowed and pick one off. But anyway, this is what I think needs to be done is, is we need to work with them, but on the same token, they need to understand that we need to get the park look like a park and be able to, uh, be able to walk around there, sit around there and do all those things. And the, and the other part of the garden where they had the boxes down there, people would go down there and they'd plant for, I don't know, potatoes or whatever they, whatever they put in there. But then when they take it out, they just left it, never cleaned it up. And then when the next year come around, they just plant some more in there and not put anything on there. So all of a sudden they complain, we couldn't do anything and there's nothing but weeds growing out of there. So what Rick did one day, he went down there and cleaned them all up completely. That's only one person doing that. So if you can't have community participation, it's hard to have that in that park and definitely don't want it in any other park because all we're going to do is destroy another park. So I thank you. I appreciate it and I hope we can get something done. And Rick does an excellent job as far as feeding people because I know where he goes every day, twice, three times a day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor Mattson, I'm at Davenport City Council. My name's Aileen O'Brien. I live in the seventh ward. And I'm here to speak about a scary experience I had as a pedestrian on April 29th this On April 29th, I was walking north on Marquette Street, crossing at Central Park Road, which is right by Trinity Lutheran School and Genesis West. I waited till the walk signal came on, looked both ways and started crossing. And I was, as I was in the second lane, I suddenly saw a car barreling towards me. The driver, uh, was coming south on Marquette and going east on, uh, Central Park. Somehow I managed to take a step backward, which I believe saved me from much worse injuries that it was headed for me, absolutely. And I never had quite thought of the sheer force of a car coming right at you, but that is what I thought of in that split moment. is what I thought of in that split moment or two. And I took a step backward and fell hard on my hands, and then fell back on my head. The driver never stopped or even swerved or slowed down. Two other drivers did and offered assistance, and ambulance came. I did not get hit by the car, and I'm very grateful for that. I didn't have any head injuries either, but always did hurt when I fell back on my head. I felt very fortunate to only have a broken wrist in my dominant hand and a sprain in my other hand. So two casts later, and a splint with that hand, and a splint later on this hand, and now I'm getting intensive physical therapy. But I don't want sympathy, I really don't. I just want to help try to bring about change to make this corner safer for all. Also, I want to add that it was about two forty in the afternoon, and Trinity Lutheran School had just dismissed, and one light ahead of me was a group of five students from Trinity Lutheran School. They were crossing west, that's a scary thought. But in the last two months, many people have seen me with my casts or splint, and people have asked what happened, and I told them what happened and where. And everyone, I mean everyone, without any exceptions, said what a dangerous corner that is, and they shared a story they had. One biker said, every cyclist in town knows to avoid that corner. Someone asked if a crossing guard or safety patrol would be helpful, but then he said, would they even be safe? Well, I'm not an engineer, I don't know the solution, but I do believe some improvements are needed to make this intersection safer. Perhaps, I mean, some ideas, widening the streets, having a dedicated turn signal at all of those four corners, reduce speed signs, use speed cameras. I don't know the solution, but I'm interested and willing to work with the city council and the Traffic and Engineering Department of the city. And I want to commend Alderman Miller because he met with me at the corner, and we talked about this, and so I appreciate his listening and helping to bring that to your attention. So thank you for listening and for your consideration. I just want to help make the city and that corner safer for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing, okay?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name's Jerry Scalluck, I live at seventeen twenty-one Westminster Circle, and I just want to take the opportunity to speak for a moment, I didn't even come down here planning on speaking, but hearing Mrs. O'Brien and his mothers, I did want to just share a couple of thoughts on my part that I have at some other meetings, been trying to promote. I'm a recreational cyclist and walker, not a some commuter or anything else, but I very much want to, first and foremost, make sure it's always emphasized that these are not bike trails, but multi-purpose recreational paths. So I do, and I hope that's not taken the wrong way, but that is an issue that also needs to be addressed simultaneously sometimes. I do like the idea that a north-south connector is very important, and we need to move forward on some kind of north-south connector, whether it's just along Eastern Avenue or the more, along the railroad route. I know working with the railroad can be challenging, to say the least, when it comes to right-of-ways, but I am a very strong proponent of that. At the same time, I will add that I am one of those people that I will take five feet of off-street bike path, over five miles of painted lines on streets as far as biking. Only people with families and young kids and stuff aren't going to use those bike lanes along streets. It's great for commuters, and I think we can do both personally, but I will take an increment of, of off-street bike or recreational path any day over on-street development. I also would like to just note that one of the other problems is, we still have way too many pieces of discontinuous sidewalk in this city. I don't think I've ever lived in another city with so many increments of sidewalk that don't go anywhere, or end on grass, or, or whatever, and I don't know whether that's a zoning or a regulation of development or what that problem is, but somehow it needs to be addressed, that we can't build these pieces of sidewalk that don't connect anything. And then finally, I'd like to just also note that, again, getting a north-south connector developed would be great, but until we do, we need to improve the safety at the intersections that we have. Now, I've talked to the city planning years ago about even doing a little more of a designating, painting sidewalk crossings and striping sidewalk at these major intersections, and I was at the time told that that does nothing but gives a false sense of safety, and actually you incur more accidents if you have these crosswalks marked. I still have never seen the actual evidence of that being the case, but maybe there's some reason for that, but I, I still think it would help, certainly improve traffic signals at some of these intersections. I come through Spring Street and cross Kimberly a lot, and that's always an unknown at best crossing there with the traffic lights, and then of course, some of these signals are even weighted or whatever sensitized to change, and, and that's an issue for bicyclists. So again, just a couple of my personal comments that I thought needed to kind of add to the mix of presentation this evening, and I thank you for your time, I know it's getting late, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Evening, my name is Rex Grove, I'm from Bettendorf, and representing the bicyclers all around, we've been here a long time, we've seen the explosion of the use of multi-use trails, and we're excited about that. Something I've noticed is that, and something that might help, would be to mark with the streetlights to yellow instead of white, the bike places, you know, if it's along the street, or if it's along here and there, where there's bicycles are going to be, make them streetlight yellow, because we've been using these bike paths, multi-use paths at night a lot more, because there's no room during the day. That's a great problem to have, and it's exploding in all of our faces, including yours, leaders of our cities. Thanks.
Thank you. I dare say, anyone else? Pausing to make sure, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Have a great evening, thank you for coming to the city council and expressing your opinions.